Mr. Mayor, you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Riddick. Okay, good evening to you all and counsel, thank you for being here tonight. This is our regular town council meeting scheduled for August 2nd, first meeting of the month. I would bring to your attention something that I believe all of you who are in our chambers room today are aware of. Beginning today, we're asking all people to come inside our building to wear masks and to practice social distancing in and where you can. And you will probably notice that with the seating arrangement that we've made here this evening, that's designed to ensure some social distancing. Also, I should mention, and most of you perhaps know this, that there is an overflow room upstairs. Nobody's having to stand, so maybe we don't have to use that at the present time, or there are some people up there.
We are using that, sir.
Okay. And so we'll look to cycle some folks in and out as we move through the agenda tonight. Okay, if you don't know me, my name is Ken Marshburn. I'm mayor, and you'll be meeting some of the council members during the meeting. But at this time, I'm going to officially call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Declare that we have a quorum, all members present. Okay, this time, we will ask Mayor Pro Tim Behringer, if she will, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and followed by the invocation. If you can and will and can stand, we'd invite you to do that as we honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I have invited Reverend Jared Wykost, youth pastor at Hayes Chapel Christian Church, to come and give the invocation this evening.
Outstanding. Reverend will recognize you, sir. Yeah, you can come to that podium over here, but that looks to be convenient for you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for having me today. Let us pray. Jesus, I thank you here for allowing us to come here today. Most of all, we come to you today as humble servants of you and looking to you as the one who grants us wisdom, Lord. So I pray that you do give us this wisdom during this time. But most of all, Lord, I thank you for the service of the men overseas and fighting in armed forces, Lord. But I pray that you give them their safety and you give them rest in their due time. Lord, I pray you protect them as much as they need it. But also, I pray that during this meeting, we will see the paths of righteousness followed as we seek to glorify you in only a way that you can bring. And so, Lord, I pray that we honor you in this meeting, and we honor your ways. And I pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you, sir. Yeah, Kathy, go ahead and, well, he's, we'll do it.
Do you have anything you'd like to tell us about the church and what your work is?
Well, we are a small church, St. Louis, right down the road. And really, anyone who's willing to come to Hayes Chapel Christian Church is welcome. And we meet at 10:00 on Sundays and 7:00 on Wednesday nights. And that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, we're going to move into the part of our agenda which we entitled petitions and comments. And you will perhaps notice that when I'm speaking, I probably will lower my mask. So we would say to any of you who come to the podium to speak, if you're comfortable, you can either lower your mask or perhaps take it off only during that time. Otherwise, we would ask you to wear it at all times, whatever you're comfortable with. So this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. And so we expect folks in our meetings to appear in person. There is an online form that is available. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action on information, excuse me, or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I noticed there are several of you here this evening who, by your dress, seem to be here for a common cause, and that's fine. We do ask that if you're all, those of you who are here interested in that one topic that either perhaps you already designated a spokesperson, we would ask you to do that. Obviously, we don't have time for everybody to speak. And we do ask you as much as possible that you limit your comments from three to five minutes, and we will sort of keep a tab on that, if you will. So I have here from the clerk, somebody who has signed the petitions and comments, a Martin, is that Petheridge? Okay. And also Ed Holzinger. Where's Ed? Okay, yeah, good to see you, sir. So I'll recognize you, Mr. Petheridge.
Thank you. My name is Martin Petheridge. I live at 2705 Dunhaven Drive. I've been a Garner resident since 1993. Today, I'm here speaking on behalf of the people here in green shirts. There are also town 12 in the overflow room. I'm also speaking for the dozens more in the community who are supporters of Garner Grows. Garner Grows is a community garden that has been active here in Garner since 2010. Garner Grows provides educational and volunteer opportunities and donates produce to local nonprofits. We have Ed Holzinger here from Garner Area Ministries, who will speak after me about the produce that we donate and the food needs there are here in Garner. So we are here today to ask the town of Garner to consider three things. Number one, to locate community gardens on town property, if possible. To partner with local nonprofits like Garner Grows and other organizations who operate community gardens. And thirdly, to amend the UDO so that it is favorable to community gardens. Now, why should you consider our request? We have seen that there is considerable demand for community gardens here in Garner. Just last week, we petitioned the residents, and we got over 250 responses, who all said they were supportive for the town of Garner to help with community gardens. There is a list of the people who responded in the packet that you have before you. I will add that of those 250, 170 of them are Garner residents who can or are able to vote in local elections. Now, not only did we ask people to sign the petition, but we also asked them to leave comments. The comments are well worth reading, and they will help you understand the level of interest there is here in Garner for community gardens. Those comments are also in that packet that you have in front of you. Now, why did all these people sign the petition? I would suggest that people recognize the benefits of community gardens, and I will touch on three of them. Community gardens are places where residents of all ages and backgrounds can learn gardening skills. They can learn how to nurture beautiful flowers. They can learn how to grow vegetables. And in Garner Grows, we have children, we have young adults, and we have retirees, all participating in our activities. And I would suggest this is a huge community strength. Secondly, community gardens are usually located close to neighborhoods, and because of this proximity, they can foster and sustain community engagement. They act just like a local community pool where residents can meet, they can engage, and they can share. And then, thirdly, people know that when you're in a community garden, you're going to get some physical exercise. When you have a garden shovel, you will get some exercise. The whole activity of tilling the soil and caring for vegetables and plants encourages a focus on healthier eating and living. And I think this is something that's desperately needed in our times. Now, we're all very familiar with the explosive growth of Garner, and with this growth has come skyrocketing property prices, and this has caused a scarcity of land that is available for community gardens. For this reason, we are here today to ask the town to support community gardens by researching opportunities to make land available for community gardens, explore partnerships with local organizations such as ours, and to amend the UDO to make it more favorable for community gardens. Now, for Garner Grows, what are our specific needs? Why are we here? Well, each community garden is different, but for our organization, we need approximately an acre of land. We need a water supply and parking for 10 to 15 vehicles. That's about all we need. We've taken some time to research town property for vital locations for community gardens, and we have identified about 13 potential sites. And these are also available for you in the package you have before you today. Thank you for hearing our request.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, and I appreciate you trying to be sensitive to the time. So, Mr. Ed, if you want to come up and speak now, sir, we'd be happy to hear from you. And again, we would ask you to be sensitive to our timeframe, if you will. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Holzinger. I'm the manager of the Food Patriot Garner Area Ministries. Many of you know that we run a thrift store and an aid office where we assist people with some bills and provide free food to Garner residents who need it. We get our funds and food from generous donors of cash and groceries that includes churches, civic organizations, individuals, and even a grant from the town of Garner. Much of our cash also comes from the thrift store by sales of items, all donated by people of the community. Garner Grows has been a significant donor of food products, both locally grown and food purchased from their own treasury. Garner Grows has given us over 1,000 pounds of food in the last 12 months, for which we're very grateful. From my experience with Garner Area Ministries, I think Garner Grows is an important asset to this community, and I hope that you can consider their request to find a way to encourage community gardens in Garner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm not encouraging other people to speak, but I would perhaps entertain one other person. But if you two, I think, I believe the council would agree with me that the presentations that have been made are certainly worthwhile and meaningful, and I think we have the gist of your request. I was going to ask the town manager, if he would, to maybe give a little explanation of how we usually handle these petitions in-house and what next steps might be from here. Do you mind, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Get on.
Yes, Mayor and Town Council. I know, I haven't been involved with the group recently, a few years ago, and I know that our planning department is currently working with, I guess, the organizations or the leadership of the public group to, you know, look at different UDO provisions that might allow community gardens in certain areas. I don't know what the progress is on that. I haven't been, you know, I've been following it directly. I know, you know, in the past, there've been some concerns about, you know, how the gardens are kept and keeping those type of things. So I think those are some, some of the logistics they want to work out, how it looks year round. We certainly appreciate the benefits of them, but when you put them in neighborhoods, close proximity to neighborhoods, you also want it to be pleasantly pleasing year round. So I know that's something that we want to try to work out with them and look at locations. As far as the, you know, the list of town properties, we have to look at each one of those individually, you know, like that on the spot, and just see if there's any opportunities for partnerships or those type of things. But it'd certainly be something new for the town, something we hadn't ventured into before, so we'll kind of tread lightly on how we deal with that.
Okay, thank you, sir. And council, any members of council, I'm going to see if you, anybody cares to comment or perhaps ask a question, we'll do that at this time. Mr. Dellinger?
I'm impressed with the presentation and the research, and I think it's, as Mr. Dickerson said, worthwhile to look through it and come back to us with, you know, feedback on this.
Yeah. Any other council member care to comment or ask a question, anybody? Okay. Well, thank you for taking the time, and as you heard, we don't just put this on the shelf. We've committed to looking at this further and getting in touch with the right departments and asking them to study it further. And I know Mr. Hodges, Assistant Town Manager here, has had some past involvement with that, and we will ask him and/or departments that we think are the proper ones to look at this manner further, okay? And so I guess the group is maybe satisfied that the two speakers tonight are good contacts for us to get back in touch with. Would that be correct? Okay, all right, very good. So, okay, if you folks, thank you again for being here. If you want to stick around for the meeting, that'll be fine. Since we have an overflow crowd tonight, if your manner has been hurt and you choose to leave, it'll make a little more room for some of the others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. We'll give you time to exit the chambers.
We have the contact number of whoever we need.
There's the mail address on here.
Good to see you, Mr. Ed. I'll tell somebody I know that I ran into you tonight. I says, "Good to see you, sir." And I know somebody who knows you quite well, and I'll give them your good regards, okay? Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, excuse me, no, I believe we're now down to the adoption of the agenda, so I'll entertain a motion from council that we adopt the agenda.
Suck it.
Okay, moved and properly suckered it. No discussion, all in favor of the adoption of the agenda as we have it in our packet? Please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, moving right along. This evening, we have two presentations, and the first one will involve our, a couple of our council members, I believe, and maybe a video, as I understand it. So Operation Coming Home is a term perhaps many of you have heard about, but you'll hopefully know more about that after tonight's presentation. So I'm going to recognize councilmembers Phil Matthews and also Mr. Elmo Vance at this time for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going, this time, look at the video, then Mr. Vance, and I'll have some comments and a presentation, if that'd be all right.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, this is a nice little news report from ABC News. It's about a minute and a half, so not too long. We'll roll it here for you.
Finally tonight, an extra special ops mission accomplished for the North Carolina Purple Heart recipient and his family, given a gift of a lifetime. Dubbed Operation Coming Home, these paratroopers are on a special mission, deploying to this suburban community outside Raleigh, North Carolina. On his way to meet them, retired Marine Sergeant Matthew Polizzi and his family. Sergeant Polizzi served 14 years, was deployed four times, and received a Purple Heart for an injury in Afghanistan. And this is how this community is showing its gratitude, presenting him with a key to a brand-new, all-expenses-paid home.
It's kind of surreal, you know? Who gets gifted a house, you know, for anything? Well, it'd be nice to get our stuff in here. I mean, it's just incredible.
All made possible by the generosity of batty homes at more than 70 vendors. The all-volunteer effort was organized by Operation Coming Home. This is the 23rd hero home they built for troops injured in combat or families of the fallen.
It's a tough life. I spent my years in the infantry. It really takes a toll on them, honestly, you know, all the deployments and the time that you're away. But it's good now, and I'm retired and everything, you know, get back to being a family.
Have that family all together in their brand-new home. Thanks so much for watching.
Mr. Mayor and guests and fellow councilmen, it was a great opportunity for Mr. Vance and I to represent the town of Garner on July 15th for this occasion. It's the first time in Garner one of these houses has been given. I believe it's number 23, and we encouraged them to, let's do some more, and there's a lot of people involved with this thing. But going out there with Mr. Vance, both and I being Army veterans, and we felt honored to be there, and I learned a little something about Mr. Vance. His son is a West Point graduate, which speaks well of a military family, and my son-in-law is still in the Navy, so we're all military families out here. But one of the main things is the Staff Sergeant, Matthew Polizzi, we'll try to get that name just right, he did serve as a drill sergeant in the United States Marines, so any veterans out there that's been through basic training or you know what we're talking about. A beautiful family, as you did see in the picture there. But we encouraged him to come when our council meetings and bring the family, and most certainly to have even more of these houses in the community. There's a lot of people to thank for that, and Mr. Vance to talk about that. But there's a certain point of privilege. As a Vietnam veteran, I find it even more special that we're going to be talking about the Veterans Clinic tonight out here on Highway 50, and veterans really are going to need that. There's not enough of them. So I'm really hoping that we'll have a nice, smooth transition and approve that and send that on to the Planning Bureau. So I just wanted to put that plug in there on behalf of all the veterans in the Garner, Wake County area, because we do need those facilities. And it's my pleasure now to bring forward my fellow councilman, Mr. Elmo Vance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Thank you, Councilman Phil. Appreciate you for that statement, the statement that you made, Mr. Matthews, and I will not say much more. It was an absolutely great opportunity to be in representation of the town during the July 15th celebration of Coming Home, Operation Coming Home, and it was, brought back a lot of memories to see the helicopters take off, the paratroopers jump out of the planes, and the planes fly over. There was even, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, there was a vintage World War II plane that flew, that flew by that was, played a significant role in the Pacific operations. And that was flown by a gentleman who was well in his 80s or 90s flying across. It was a great, great event, and as Councilman Matthews said, that this is the 23rd home in this area. And it's a conglomerate of a number of home builders in the area, and one that we know very well who comes before us quite often is Douglas Paul, and also who was a port engineer is Mr. Keith Roberts. They come before us, and they came before us along with Mr. Paul Kane, who's the Secretary of the, of the, of the Operation Coming Home, 501 C3 Foundation. It was either December or January with the request for the fee waiver for the home, and we had the opportunity to vote on that, and we voted to waive the fees for that particular home in the neighborhood. And as Councilman Matthews already said so eloquently, that the gentleman, Staff Sergeant Polizzi, he was a wounded soldier in operations, but also they build homes for those who lost their lives in battles for the, and they build homes for the surviving families. So it was definitely a great event. It was one that was a lot of fun, and it brought back a lot of memories, and I learned a lot about a lot of people, and I just hope that we're able to do something similar in the future for our veterans who are serving us on that wall, while we are here able to do what we're doing right now. While we're resting at night, there's somebody on the wall making sure that we're protected. And we just hope that we're able to continue to recognize and remember those who are doing their service for this country. Thank you. And Mayor, Mayor Marshburn, if you come down for a moment?
Okay.
There was a plaque that was presented to the town because of our contribution that was made. It's a part of the Operation Coming Home, and it reads thusly. If you're not scared of me, come on.
Okay.
Okay, it says, "Operation Coming Home, presented to the town of Garner Town Council in recognition and appreciation of your generous commitment and patriotism in support of hero home number 23, Garner, North Carolina, July 15th, 2021." I present this to the mayor.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Can I send it that way? A nice plaque here.
Can you get that away?
And let me just say, I'm proud to serve with you two gentlemen, and thank you for representing us so well at this event. I was out of town and wasn't able to be there. But, Mr. Manager, we will find the proper place to hang this. I may want to put it in my office, but we'll see where we put it.
We'll see.
Thank you all. Let's give these gentlemen a round of applause.
Do you want to get a photo with the seal or something?
One more?
You're smiling, right?
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, we have one other presentation this evening, and I'm going to recognize our town engineer, Mr. Chris Johnson, who will introduce the person and the subject here. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to welcome and introduce Mr. Dennis Jernigan from the North Carolina Turnpike Authority to provide a presentation on the Complete 540 project. Mr. Jernigan is the Deputy Chief Engineer for Highway Operations with the North Carolina Turnpike Authority, and is in charge of construction for Complete 540. Prior to his current role, Mr. Jernigan served as the NCDOT Division 5 Construction Engineer, served over 29 years of experience with NCDOT, including roadway construction engineer for the Central Construction Unit, the Division 4 Resident Engineer, and Assistant Resident Engineer in Division 6 and 8. Mr. Jernigan holds a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from North Carolina State University, and is a licensed professional engineer and a certified public manager. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Jernigan. We're pleased to have you here and to hear from you this evening, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, just take one moment, as a former service member myself, I would also like to express my appreciation for Sergeant Polizzi and to all those who made it possible to recognize him and to recognize service members for their service and the way they defend our freedoms. But I am pleased to be here tonight.
But I am pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the Turnpike Authority, on behalf of NC DOT, to give you a presentation on Complete 540. You've got a lot of information, so I'm going to jump right in. But I did want to take a few minutes just to tell you about the Turnpike Authority. We don't just operate and maintain toll roads. We are constantly looking for ways to improve safety, improve the motorist experience in North Carolina, not just on turnpike facilities, but also for all of DOT. And I'll briefly tell you, we are currently evaluating several wrong-way driver-vehicle pilots, wrong-way driver pilots, excuse me, on the Triangle Expressway. We've also got a couple on the Monroe Expressway we're looking at. And in 2017 and 2018, we were designated by US DOT as an autonomous vehicle proving ground. So we're in the autonomous and connected vehicle circle and we have prior experience with General Motors and Volvo Trucks North America. We are the most interoperable toll agency in the United States. You see here some of the states that we are, we have interoperability agreements with, recently adding Minnesota, which you see up there, but we're looking to spread that west. From a service, safety, and innovation standpoint, on turnpike facilities, we have dedicated motorist assistance patrol. You've probably seen these vehicles out along I-40 and I-85 and places like that. But for Monroe Expressway and Triangle Expressway, we actually have dedicated service and dedicated coverage in case motorists need assistance. We also have dedicated highway patrol. And they're there for, not only for enforcement, but also in the case of incidents to help motorists who may be in need. And as I mentioned, looking for ways to make things more efficient, make things safer. We are currently in the middle of a pilot with GoToll. And it is a way for casual users of our facilities, who may not want to get a transponder, to have their license plate read and to pay via an app. And so you register your license plate, you register your form of payment, and when you pass under a gantry, your license plate's tied to this app and you're billed accordingly. So when you're thinking about toll facilities in North Carolina, NC DOT is, is recently working, worked on a study called NC Moves 2050. And what they're finding by that is the population in North Carolina is expected to grow by 4 million people in that timeframe. So we're going to go from 11 million to 15 million people. And 66% of those are really going to be concentrated in the Triangle and the Charlotte region. So folks like yourself, who are looking for ways to, to manage your infrastructure, to make sure the infrastructure is there, to, who support that kind of population, look to us sometimes and, and ask us to evaluate the feasibility of some facilities as told. So what you see here in the green boxes are facilities that are currently open, that we're associated with. The blue boxes are ones that are under construction and the white ones are ones that are under development at this time. But we're going to focus tonight on Complete 540. So let's start by taking a snapshot of where we are. The gray portion that you see in the top there are the 42 miles that are currently open to traffic. And I know the, the blue and the gray might be a little difficult to see, but on the bottom portions, almost horizontal, you see the 18 miles that make up what we call Phase 1, that is currently under construction. And then that bright green that's on the right side is Phase 2. That's the part that will complete the loop and that's the last 11 miles. And we're going to focus on Phase 1 tonight. But while we're here, I will mention that the latest schedule for Phase 2 has right-of-way acquisition beginning in fiscal year 2015 and construction beginning in fiscal year 2016. But why do we need to extend Complete, or Triangle Expressway? So this is the portion that is currently open, is somewhat vertical. You see it on the west side of Raleigh. That portion there, that's again, the horizontal portion of your drawing, is the part that's under construction now, Phase 1. So for motorists who are traveling from points south and east to the west or who are traveling the other direction from the west to points south and east, especially during peak hour, they have to go into downtown Raleigh if they're on I-40, lots of closely spaced urban interchanges, lots of congestion. So what Complete 540 will do is to give motorists another travel alternative. But you don't have to use the entirety of the facility. Once we get through, there will be 17 interchanges along the facility that motorists can use for the part that benefits them. Now for Phase 1 that's under construction, even though we call it Phase 1, it's actually made up of three different projects. And those projects are shown here. And the dividing lines from the project on the west, which we call the, the A Project, you see the designations there on the bottom of your screen, R-2721A, B, and the large one being R-2828. But the A Project begins at NC-55, where Triangle Expressway currently terminates and it ends around Pierce-Sullivan Road. The B Project extends from Pierce-Sullivan Road to just east of 401, near Fannie Brown. And then the 2828 Project extends over to I-40, near US-70. The interchanges that will be either completed or completely built are shown there on the bottom right of your screen. Now, as we went into procurement, there was a couple of things that we wanted to do, to, to do innovatively about this project. And, and we wanted to make sure there was a lot of inclusion and a lot of opportunities for everybody to work in this corridor. So the, what you see on the left side there is, is an invitation. We had a, a DVE or disadvantaged business enterprise workshop, as well as an industry forum, and we had those on the same day. If you look at the left, the agenda on the left, and if you, if you look at it very closely, and I'm not asking you to study it right now, what you'll see is, in the morning, we had a workshop for the, our disadvantages, disadvantaged small business. So it's minority, small business enterprises. And so we told them all about the process, how to get certified, how you can get approved to be on the approved list, to work on the project and that kind of thing. And then in the afternoon, we had an industry forum, which you see the invitation on the right, and this is a photo from that, where the prime contractors came in. And we had several networking opportunities throughout the day so that those two groups could get together. So the result of that was that we had over $75 million of commitments to disadvantaged and small business enterprises that are either, they have already completed work on the project or they have their contracted full work on the project. But one of the other things that we did that was somewhat different is, in the right-of-way process, we typically, these are all three design-build projects. And in, in a design-build project, the right-of-way process is typically left to the design-build team. But on this particular corridor, on the A and the B Project, we actually led a separate right-of-way contract for the A and the B job. And what we did separately, those things that you see listed there are typically contracted individually. But we actually packaged it and put it out in two separate contracts, encouraged minority participation, and ended up with a minority prime on the A jo, uh, B job, excuse me, who was also a subcontractor on the A job. So what that resulted in was, in addition to the $75 million for the construction, we actually had more than $5 million that went to a DVE firm on the right-of-way acquisition. So we ended up with over $80 million that has been or will go to disadvantaged minority and small business firms. As part of the right-of-way process, we tried something new, something that hadn't been done before on a DOT project. And so we, we had a right-of-way tracking tool. So the right-of-way agents used it, we gave the contractor access to it. And so what this is, is a sort of a one-stop shop. We put all the documents in one place. The way it's currently done is by parcel. So if I want to go and look at something, I've got to know the parcel number. I've got to go to that particular folder with that particular parcel. But by doing it this way, it's all in one place. It's connected to a SharePoint site, all the negotiating documents, the deeds, everything's in one place and it made it really easy. We color-coded the parcels there to, so that the contractor, when he looks at it, can tell at a glance what's available to work, which intuitively is green. If it's blue, it's settled, but not yet closed, so we don't yet have access. If it's yellow, in negotiation, and it's orange, you have an appraisal ordered. So he can kind of see where we are in the process. Now, you may look at this photo and say, "Why is a beekeeper in a bedroom?" When I see this photo, I think back to the Amityville horror movies when I was young, about insects and whatnot in homes. But he's not working on the HVAC. If you zoom into the curtains here, what you see is, one of the homes that we had to remove from the project actually had a beehive in the walls. I don't know if I could have stayed there, but I guess the homing might have been calming to me. But anyway, because of the fact that there's a, a decline in the pollinator population as opposed to just tearing the house down, we actually brought in a beekeeper to try to relocate the hive so that we could continue to encourage the growth and the maintenance of pollinator population. And you actually see that referenced here in the left column, but this is with a different group, the North Carolina Native Plant Society. As part of our project, we coordinated with, with this particular group. What they do is they come in on Saturdays, they have volunteers that come in on Saturdays, before you do the clearing on the project. And those volunteers go out and look for threatened and endangered plants. And what they find, they, they dig up and they relocate somewhere so that they can be saved. And while we are looking for the current, as far as building the project and how this project's going to benefit us in the future, we also studied 155 archaeological sites or potential sites along the corridor. And one of the ones that was found was between Saul's Road and Holland Church Road. And it was excavated before the contractor began working the area. They ended up finding over 16,000 artifacts that date back to different periods, but some of them date back as many as 10,000 years. I put in the top right corner there, WTVD actually ran a story on this, but these are some photos of some of the artifacts that were taken from that excavation. Now, I mentioned earlier, we wanted to make sure people had an opportunity to participate in these contracts. Well, if you go out there and, and procure all three at the same time, that kind of makes it difficult. You've kind of got to make a decision. Do I go all in or do I hold back? So what you're going to see here, and I've kind of put some markers in here, we actually staggered these lettings such that, by the time we got ready to open bids on one, we, we were not yet ready to open bids on others. So as you see here, when we started, the red line shows that when the B Project started, we were already past the second draft RFP on the 2828 job. And then by the time we started the A Project, we were just about ready to receive technical proposals. And as we moved down the line, what you'll see is, we, we allowed contractors to see whether they were successful on one contract so they could make decisions about whether or not to pursue the subsequent contracts. And of course, if you get to the end and you still haven't got any, then you kind of got to decide whether to go all in. But this was the outcome of our procurements. All three projects were joint ventures, which means we had two construction contractors. Each project had us a different designer. And you see those listed in the top, the top section, but in the bottom of the blue box. And these were the contract amounts, between 160 and 403 million dollars. Now currently, this is the status of where we are on all three projects. And for those of you who may have seen the WRL story the other day, you're going to say, "Wait a minute, they said 35% and I don't see anything that low here." But these, these percentages take into account the design component as well. And so when we gave the number to WRL the other day, that was strictly more of a construction standpoint. This is the complete design and construction percentage here. So a couple of things about the project, and some of these are informational, some of these are some of the challenges. In the corridor, we have 52 bridges, over half of which are under construction. We have 33 culverts, over 70% are either underway or have been completed. We had two power transmission lines that had to be relocated, one at Pierce-Sullivan and one at Holland Church. Nine different petroleum transmission line crossings with two different companies. I can tell you, we worked on that, that effort right there for about three years. But I will say, they were great partners to work with. It's just sometimes you have to step through some things, it takes time. But it was very much a successful effort, even though it sounds like it took a lot of time. The regular utility owners, and I've, I've got a couple of those here, Dugger Distribution, AT&amp;T Spectrum, you see in the bottom there, some of the trucks relocating some of the facilities. Neighborhood proximity. There's a lot of this project that is in the middle of a field or going through woods, but there's a lot of neighborhoods along here, too. And so we want to be sensitive to that. And I'm going to speak to that a little bit later about some of the things we're doing. We can't not be there, but we can also be a good neighbor. Wake Technical Community College out on 401. Now, one of the, if, if you've got to look for positives in the pandemic, one of the things that we did do, we were going to have to have some pretty close coordination with Wake Tech when they're, we're out for summer because we had work that had to be done on Olmecolors, which as most of you know, is a butt's Wake Tech on the north. So when the pandemic came and, and they started remote learning, we actually used that opportunity, not only here, but in other places, to do some in-road work to lessen our impact to traffic. So we actually replaced a covert on Olmecolors Road while Wake Tech was out for the pandemic. And that allowed us to avoid those impacts to the student population. Local municipal infrastructure. When you're building 18 miles, you're going to run into water lines and sewer lines and things like that. So we are working closely with our municipal partners. But one of the things we've also worked with them on is looking ahead to future growth and future expansion. And what you see here, cutting across the bottom of the photo, is actually an encasement for a, a future sewer line that the town of Apex wanted. And this is on the west end of the job. You can kind of see the end of the, our facility on the, on the top of the photo. And so in addition to looking for your long-range plans, we also, and, and that involves where we've got roads that intersect 540, we're making bridges wider, we're looking at ultimate typical sections. Might be a two-lane road now, but it's going to be a three in the future. We might have built it out or accommodated that future expansion. This is an example of one of those efforts of collaboration with the town of Garner. So what you see here is, at Benson Road, the town is anticipating some future utility, wet utility growth out there. And so this is one of the plan sheets that has utility encasements going under the ramps and the main line at 540 and NC-50. We, we have agreed to install over 1,800 feet of encasements that will benefit the town of Garner for our future infrastructure expansion. And also in the town of Garner, I'll call it the ETJ. I don't know that we're currently there with the town limits. But you'll see here some of the bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. Old Stage and Benson Road, there are either sidewalks or multi-use paths. And then for Jordan Road, Fannie Brown, Holland Church, and Saul's, we're making the bridges wider either over or under 540 to accommodate those future sidewalk accommodations. Also on NC-50, we've got shared, they're really called shared lanes on the outside. They're wider than your typical travel lanes to accommodate bicycles. So briefly, I'm going to step you through each section of the project and kind of give you a few highlights and maybe you'll see a little construction photo or two in there. We'll start with the A job. And the interchanges at the A job are indicated by the yellow arrows. We're finishing the one at NC-55 at the terminus of the current Triangle Expressway. And then the other is Holly Springs Road. So what we have here is the end of the existing facility. It's currently had, there's one bridge that crosses NC-55. And what you see to the right is the other bridge that's under construction. You can kind of see on the far side, one of those walls is going up, one of those signature turnpike walls with the vertical abutments. And you see that wall is almost finished. And then on the near side, you can see the piles have been installed and, and some of the wall panels are going up right there. This is East Williams Street. We've got the piles in place, but we're not quite ready to build the bridge because we've got to put the embankments in. So this is in the Apex area, just down the street from the town of Holly Springs. I mentioned Holly Springs Road earlier. The interchange type that's going to be there is a diverging diamond interchange. And some of you may have heard about these, some of you may know a lot about them. But this is where you briefly drive on the left side of the road. When we started, there were only about a dozen of these in North Carolina, but they are really becoming more and more popular. And now there is actually five of these going in, in the Wake County area within the next few years, some of which are already under construction, just like ours is. This is actually the location where that interchange is going to be. For those familiar with the area, Holly Springs Road runs up and down in this photo and Killdeer Farm comes in from the left, it's a T-intersection. Problem is, our alignment goes right across that area. So what we're doing is we're pushing Killdeer Farm to the north by about 1,000 feet. We're realigning it. And you can see the clearing there, the yellow area where we're bringing that in. Moving on to the B Project, again, that's between Pierce-Sullivan and just east of US-401. Interchanges there are Bell's Lake Road and US-401, as would be expected. And one of the things we did here was collaborated with the local highway division, Division 5. They had a project to realign Optimus Farm Road at Donnybrook Road. It's an offset intersection. And we wanted to close Lake Wheeler Road for a couple of months to do some construction in there. But it really is, is better for motorists and it's more efficient for motorists if the intersection is lined up. And so we actually worked it out with them, pulled that project into our project using their funding. They had already done the preliminary environmental work. And so that's actually already been done. You can see the, the pavement in place here. We've actually already turned traffic there. So motorists are already using this particular facility. This is US-401. You see a lot of the embankment going up here. And just to give you bearings, if you look in the top left, if you're familiar with this area, that is Donnybrook Road and Olmecolors. So north is to your right. Another thing we coordinated with them, Division 5, is they're, they actually have a project in the works between 1010 and our project to improve US-401. So we collaborated with them just to make sure our rights, our rights of way lined up, our utilities lined up. We didn't want their pole being 10 feet off from ours and not being able to tie in and things like that. And we just needed to establish where to cut our work off and pick theirs up. And so we wanted to make sure that we tied in smoothly. Next, we'll move on to the, the big project, R-2828. And, and I'm really spending more time on this one because, again, this is closer to the area of Garner. So the interchanges in this particular section, we have Old Stage Road by the left area, yellow area there, NC-50. And what you see on the right kind of looks like what we as kids did with the old Spirograph game. But that's actually a very efficient interchange. It's, we're going to talk about that in just a second. But that's where 540, I-40, and US-70 come together. Our designers affectionately labeled that the dream catcher. I was a little late to the party. I wanted to name it an atypical starfish, but I lost because they had already decided that when I got there. But some of the work that's on the project right now, this is Fannie Brown Road. So you see, we've made very good progress here on this particular bridge. Girders are in place, the end vents or the end supports are being constructed now. So very soon we'll be pouring that deck. This is at Holland Church. And so if you look just to the right of the photo and just kind of lower middle, you see a couple of roads, you see three roads. Those are actually paths. Those are actually piles that have been driven. And so those will be the footers. If you look kind of, line yourself up with the red crane boom there, that's where 540, the alignment is going to be for the main line, to give you an idea. And then Holland Church Road will cross there. This is something that's a little bit unique on the 2828 project, but it's really unique in general. These are radially designed bridges. Our designer found this area between Saul's Road and Holland Church Road, we needed to bridge an environmentally sensitive area, and one bridge could have been shorter than the other. But if you use your typical rectangular pattern and make one shorter than the other, then you end up with a wall between the bridges, you end up with aesthetic concern. And so he came up with this design, where it's very aesthetically pleasing, and it allowed him to accomplish his goal of shortening one bridge, and it's yet another unique feature that's on the project. And you can see on the right side there, we've actually poured part of the deck on one of those bridges. This is at Jordan Road. You can see we have the piles in place. If you actually, if you saw the WRL story the other day, this is actually one of the locations where part of that was filmed. That wall that's on the far side there, we stood behind that, and they did some of that. But that kind of gives you a little bit of bearings about where we are. So that's coming along very well. And this is NC 50. So we recently, just a couple of weeks ago, we put this detour in place. And the detour is on the right side of your photo. And so what you see in the middle there, kind of running almost vertical on the photo, is old NC 50. And it just so happens, if you look in the left side of the photo, that's the contractor's field office for the R 2828 job. So he's right there, just off NC 50. And so you will soon see some bridge construction beginning right there if you pass along this area. But again, when I mentioned the Dreamcatcher area, and you think, why do we need that kind of interchange there? So these are the traffic projections for 2040. We always design our projects for 20 years out. If we design it for today, by the time we build it, it doesn't work anymore. So we look 20 years out. Our traffic volumes are here for 2040. And if you look up and down, that's I-40 in the blue, so you see 116,000. The green is 540. You see between 26 and 37. And then the white is US 70. So you can see, we have almost 200,000 vehicles a day that are projected to use this area in the next 20 years. So this is called a turbine interchange. And this is pretty standard, when you have a high volume, two major facilities intersecting, like you do here. And even though it kind of looks complicated, it's really kind of simple because you can only go in eight different directions. You can go right, or if you want to go left, you have to follow this direction, but that's it. So it's pretty simple. You're either going left or right using these. But you have two intersecting facilities there. We have three. And so our designers came up with this. We call it a turbine-style interchange. It's not a true turbine. But again, if you think about handling that volume, 200,000 vehicles per day, this is going to be very efficient for several years in making sure that we can handle the traffic volume from this area. And what's going to follow next, the designer who's on the R 2828 job, which is WSP, actually made a visualization. And I will say, this is available on our project website, which I'm going to share later. And this is an excerpt. And it's going to show you what this interchange is going to look like when it's functioning after we get it open. This interchange takes up 481 acres. There's 37 acres of pavement. It has 13 bridges, six of which cross I-40. Now, you notice between some of those bridges, there are no pavement, there's no pavement there. And that's because they will be put into use when Phase Two is built. But we're going ahead and building those bridges now so we don't impact traffic when that time comes. And you'll notice there, those 70 bridges are taken out, and those 70 bridges are just above where 540 crosses 40. And I'll briefly give you, this is a picture's worth of 1,000 words, but a video is, I guess, an infinite number of words. It's a whole lot easier to show sometimes. What you're going to see here is we have a drone shot that's at I-40. We have the drone spin around. You were looking down 70 to the east. We're spinning now, looking toward I-40 west. And if you look very closely, right where 70 crosses there, you can see the two mainline bridges of 540 that are crossing. But now, you can start to see the circular pattern forming of the interchange there, as well as you see in the bottom, a lot of earth moving that's going on right now. And you can see that middle bridge right now where that will tie into the eastbound direction of 540 later. The ramp you're seeing now, come into view from the left, will be westbound 40 to eastbound US 70. And I'll go ahead and skip ahead. So I mentioned earlier, one of the things that's important to us is being a good neighbor. It's going to take us a while. We're going to be out there for a couple of years. And again, we want our neighbors to know that we care and that we're trying to be considerate neighbors to them. This slide right here actually has a lot of information on it. At the top is our website. We actually have a project website. All of our environmental documents, the video that you just saw, in addition to the things I'm going to show you right here, are on that website. At the bottom, we have a project-specific email address and an 800 number that is maintained by one of our consultants, H.W. Lochner, who is represented here tonight with Mr. Easton. And we have three resources that I wanted to show you. There's a lot on there, but I want to show you three of those right quick. One of the questions that is very typical for a project this size is noise walls. So we have completed our noise study on the 2828 project, but not on the A and the B. So now that we have completed the one, we post it online so that a resident at any time can go and look and see the status. And that's what you see there on the left. It gives an idea of the height of the wall, the length of the wall, where it's located, and it's also identified with a map. On the right side, one of the other questions we get a lot are either individuals or realtors wanting to know, how's the property affected? If I buy this property or if I own this house? And so they can always reach out to us at the email address, at the 800 number. But if they want to get an idea before they do that, we've got this interactive map, which you see on the right. The reason it's color-coded is color-coded by municipal boundaries. That's why there are different colors on there. So you can use that map to zoom into a property. You can put the address in, it'll zoom to that property. It shows you where the right-of-way is, whether the right-of-way is a standard, non-controlled access or controlled access. And you can also measure distance. There's a measuring tool on there. But the one that gets a lot of hits is the one in the middle, the Interactive Construction Map. And this is also available at the website that's listed there at the top. So a citizen can go on there. Those orange drums that you see in the middle, if you click on one of those, and you can zoom in, obviously, to kind of get as close as you want to get, a pop-up box appears on the left side of the screen. It shows you what the activity is, when it started, how long it's going to take. We get about 75 hits a day on that particular map. So if people are really using that, it's a really useful tool. So if you want to use it, again, it's on our project website there. But prior to the pandemic, one of the things that was very, very important to us is to go out and talk to people. You may not always have the news they want to hear, but you listen and you give the best information that you have. So we were doing that a lot before the pandemic hit. When the pandemic hit, we were very concerned about not being able to do that. So our communications team evaluated several different platforms. We chose the one that worked for us. And so we started going out and reconnecting with HOAs, with civic organizations, municipalities, because nobody was having in-person meetings. And so over the last 15 months, we've had over 41 public meetings with over 1,300 participants. We've sent out over 15,000 postcards, now over 15. We use Nextdoor Posts, which I'm going to show you that in just a second. And our 800 number and our emails, we get about three inquiries a day. So it's really important to us to stay in touch with the folks that are along the corridor or anybody who wants to know about the project for that matter. This is an example of one of our Nextdoor Posts. We try to geofence those and capture people in an area. We either use this, postcards. If we're going to start work, driving piles, hauling earth material, things of that nature, we want to let people know. We don't want to surprise them when they wake up the next day and wonder what that noise is. So this is one of the methods that we use to reach out and make sure they know we're coming. We've gotten some good media coverage lately, locally and nationally. There's the one on the left there, these are three magazines, is Civil and Structure Engineer. The one on the right is Roads and Bridges. If you're in the engineering and construction circle, nationally-known magazine, we actually got the cover story. So it's great to be in that magazine, but it's a huge honor to be on the cover. So we were very fortunate, very honored to be chosen for the cover. And then the middle publication that you see there, one of our consultants, HNTB, they published, it's a magazine, but you can also get it electronically, and it's called Think. And so they actually asked us to highlight some of our efforts, both from being, our efforts to be a good neighbor to folks along the corridor, as well as making sure we had good diversified production from the industry, as far as representation from the industry. So we were featured in that as well. I mentioned earlier the website, the 800 number, and the email address, that's there. We also have Twitter handle, if you are into Twitter. Those are listed down there at the bottom. And with that, again, before I open the questions, I want to thank you for this opportunity, for having me here tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, very much, Mr. Jernigan. Not denigrating anything on here because it's all very interesting, but I couldn't help but think my seven-year-old granddaughter was visiting with me recently, and she got out of spirograph. And so even that last picture you have up there reminds me a little bit of a drawing or two she did with that. Quite interesting how roads are built these days. I'm going to turn it over to council for questions they might have at this point, but we do appreciate you coming here. And I may want to talk to you a little bit later about coming out to a civic club with those kinds of things. Phil, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, by the way. There are people watching, and you've shared a great deal of information. When I see this, I happened to be coming through Atlanta one Friday night, north of Atlanta, pouring down rain. I've been up that stretch of 85. And this place called Spaghetti Junction, if you've ever had the opportunity. And I fell in on that thing, and I wasn't sure where I was going. When I seen it, you certainly give me a flashback. But once you learned it, you could really navigate around it. But a great presentation, and we're looking forward to having this thing complete. It'll help traffic in the greater Garner area, and as much as we're growing. And I hope you'll come back and keep us updated like this. Great presentation.
Thank you, sir. Be glad to.
Okay, Ms. Singleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jernigan. It was a very informative presentation. Question about road capacity. I thought I heard in the story last week, it was from WRL, the 540, the capacity, the average capacity in a day in so many years. I thought I heard 60,000, and I must, I may have heard something wrong. Is that correct? Am I right or wrong on that?
That absolutely shows me you were paying attention to the story. It was 60,000 is the number that was used. Yes, sir.
That's projected, that when this leg opens up, that's how many will be on 540? How will you use 540?
At the busiest point, and I will say, prior to the pandemic, we were actually, we had exceeded 60,000 vehicles per day at our busiest point on Triangle Expressway. But on this portion of 540, at the busiest location, it's right around 60,000 are expected to use this as well.
After it's opened for, in the first year or five years? Or how long is it?
Not immediately. We always go through a period of ramp up. It'll probably be faster here because Triangle Expressway is open on one end. But that is the projected volume in the 2040 range. It'll grow up to that point.
Very good. And question on the toll, when people are coming off here, this intersection here at 40 and getting on 540, the toll will start right in this area here, correct?
Only if you're on 540.
If you're on, yes. When you get into 540, that's when it'll, whether you're checking your license plate or you got the pass or whatever, that's where it's going to start as soon as you get on 540.
There will be gantries in between all of those interchanges that I showed. We're going mainline tolling on this particular section. On existing Triangle Expressway, we have a few locations where the tolls are actually on the ramps. But this is all mainline tolling. So between 40 and NC 50, there will be a gantry. Between 50 and Old Stage, there will be a gantry, and so on and so on. And so we've really made concentrated efforts at this particular interchange to separate the toll and non-toll movements to eliminate confusion.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, I'll keep going this way.
Yes, sir. I don't think I've ever seen such a complete and thorough presentation, and your knowledge of what you're talking about is amazing. So thank you for your time spent, and we look forward to talking with you again and seeing the next phase.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Dalemburg.
Yeah, good presentation. I might have missed it. When's it going to be open?
Right now, we're looking to try and open in 2023. We're going to open the entire segment as one piece, even though there are three separate projects. Because if you think about the roads that we intersect, there's really no good place where you could open a segment. So we're looking to open the entire piece. I will tell you, 2020 was not kind from a weather standpoint. It was the wettest year on record in this area. So we do have some ground to make up, but right now, we're targeting the end of '23.
End of '23. Thank you.
Hope to be able to attend a ribbon-cutting or something out there.
I hope so.
Mr. Vance.
Yes, Dennis, I echo what everyone has said, extremely thorough and good presentation. And you mentioned about the introduction of the new right-of-way tool, capturing the data and all the information. Are you using drones for that, to capture the information?
We're not. And I will say, the right-of-way tool that we're using, HNTB developed that for the Durham Light Rail project. So they were actually using it over there. And so when we started acquisition on Complete 540, they offered to modify it to meet our needs, which was really good because any report we wanted, anything like that, they got their programmers to modify that for us. But no, basically, it used just the right-of-way limits. It doesn't take aerial footage. At the time we started, Wake County GIS actually had, on their GIS site, Wake IMAPs, they actually had the corridor of 540 that showed, but they had a study corridor. It was 1,000 feet wide. And so as part of the technology that we use for the tool, we actually collaborated with them to share files because as we bought right-of-way, the right-of-way is only about 350 feet wide, except at interchanges. And so that was causing confusion when folks would look at Wake IMAPs, and they'd see a 1,000-foot corridor, and their house was in it, and they want to know why they hadn't been contacted. And so that was good for years to give people an idea that they were somewhat close. But once we refined the design and started pulling that in, it was really based on actual right-of-way limits, and so we don't have that aerial footage. We have drone footage now for things like this and for people to see, but it wasn't part of the right-of-way tool. Okay. Thank you.
One quick question on the right-of-way. Is that now a layer in IMAPs, the actual route? I know there's still the projected. I look at IMAPs all the time. Is there a layer added in Wake GIS that has the actual path for 540 now?
So they actually took it off. A couple of months ago, they took it off. But what we did before they did that was we worked with them to refine the limits so that now the actual right-of-way shows up as far as what has been purchased for most of it. And it hasn't been refined. We've still got a couple of dozen parcels. But now, when you look at it, you can literally see a corridor, and it swells out at interchanges and comes back. And so a lot of it is obvious now.
Okay, anything else, counsel? This may be a very premature question, but I get it occasionally. Can you give us some idea of the tolling process? That is, how the tolls will, how they're gauged, how you can anticipate how much you will have to pay to use this road?
Yes, sir. Our toll rates are set by our board. The Turnpike Authority has a separate board, and we use a traffic and revenue study. And so what they do is they don't, again, just like traffic volumes, they look at it over the life of the bond period, of the payback period. And so they project inflation, maintenance costs, and that's another point. The maintenance on a toll facility is funded from tolls. Sometimes people think it just goes back to pay back the bond, but we actually fund our own maintenance, too. So there's a lot that comes out of those couple of dollars that people pay every time they use it. But our board looks at that traffic and revenue study, they set the toll rates, and they approve any increases, and that is governed by that board.
Okay, all right. Anything else? I do know my experience, I've driven out to Colorado where I have a daughter and grandchildren a few times, and I think it's right there, close to the Denver Airport. As we're going there, we hit a toll, and they always, about two weeks after my travel, I get this nice little letter from their Turnpike Authority or whatever, and you know, they have my license plate, and you know, I owe them X number of dollars. Usually not that much, but yeah. So, all right. Again, thank you very much. Thank you, Chris, for arranging for this. And counsel, unless you have other questions, we'll dismiss Mr. Jernigan and let him be on his way. But we look forward to hearing from you again, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to come back anytime.
Good deal. Thank you, sir. Okay, we are now, counsel, down to the consent agenda. There are four items there that you had a chance to review, I'm sure. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless anybody needs to have further discussion on any item.
No move. Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Properly moved and seconded. So if you favor approving the consent agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, and anybody opposed, no. And it passes. Thank you very much. All right, we have this evening, two public hearings, and so per our agenda, we will take them in the order in which they're presented, conditional zoning map amendment with site plan. And let me see, Mr. Trezenberg, you're the man up for this one, right? Okay, we'll recognize you at this time, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel.
Good evening.
Let me find where I'm at here. All righty, so tonight, we do have conditional zoning case CZ SP twenty fifteen, nine hundred Rand Road, here tonight for a public hearing, first step in the public review process. Just some general introductory case information, the applicant is nine hundred Rand Road LLC. The owner is nine hundred Rand Land LLC. It is a sixteen-point-four-five acre assemblage. The request was submitted at the end of last year, twelve twenty-nine of 2020, to the planning department, and the request was to rezone from community retail general and single-family residential R forty general to community retail conditional district. The applicant is looking to construct two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-two square feet of commercial space with an attached parking deck. Here's the site location. Ann Benson Road, Highway fifty, which you all just heard about a lot of. NC five forty is going to be down here. I can show you where that is in a little bit later. You have Rand Road coming in here, Swift Creek cuts through right about up in here, and then Arbor Green Drive, and Rand Road Elementary School. Here's an existing shot from Google Street View at Arbor Green, looking north towards Rand Road on fifty. The existing zoning today, most of the site, about eighty-nine percent of the site, is zoned community retail general today, so that allows any and all community retail uses in that district. There are three parcels here that were zoned R forty to accommodate the existing single-family homes that were there, and those have been added to the site and are being asked for to go to community retail conditional as well. In terms of zoning history, there's not been a lot of rezoning in this area. However, the biggest, and still to this day, the most probably influential for this area was when Garner expanded their ETJ in nineteen eighty-eight. This was a South Garner ETJ expansion. This was when the zoning was converted from Wake County zoning to Town of Garner, and it was at that time that the community retail, then known as community business, was applied to this parcel. We've had a couple more since then for the Britmore and the Creekside subdivisions. And here you can see that nineteen, this is actually a copy of a snapshot of the map that in nineteen eighty-nine, just shortly after the ETJ expansion was completed. You can see here again, here's the site with that community business designation. You had the MF one, which became the school site. You have this R twelve and R fifteen, which became the various subdivisions in the area. You have some multifamily, which is still on the books today, some office institutional and more community business that is still on the books as well. So back in the day, this was envisioned to be a fairly developed corridor coming into Again, eighty-nine percent of the area is already zoned community retail. There are fifty-two uses that are allowed by right in that district. That includes things such as retail, office banks. You see a whole variety of things, medical clinics, mental health facilities, colleges, group care facilities. All of those are allowed by right if they were under a hundred thousand square feet. There's a remaining one-point-seven-six acres comprising those other three small parcels, which is eleven percent of the side area, zone single-family residential forty. There are twenty-three uses allowed in that district, including single-family modular, double-wide manufactured homes, solar facilities, major utilities, agriculture, et cetera. So the applicant has proposed a conditional retail, or community retail conditional district. So taking it down from that general list of fifty-two to a list of thirty-seven. Those are all listed here in your staff report. And the second condition would be that the development of the site would be completed in conformance with the approved preliminary site plan. So in terms of some community information, staff identified about seventeen properties within the notification area prescribed by the UDO. We provided that list to the applicant. They went ahead and actually notified two hundred and forty-four property owners, and included all of the residents of Arbor Green, Britmore, and Wood Oak Place subdivisions. They had a remote meeting on May twenty-fourth with nineteen folks in attendance, and an in-person meeting on May twenty-fifth, that should be 2021, at the Centennial Park Picnic Shelter with nine folks in attendance there.
Hello. Good evening. So for infrastructure frontage improvements, these are improvements that are required in accordance with the town's UDO in order to, in order for the project to be consistent with the town's transportation plan. So along Benson Road, the applicant will widen on the development side to half of a four-lane divided facility. Along Rand Road, they will be widening on the development side to half of a major collector, which is a three-lane divided facility. And then along the property frontage on Arbor Green, the road will be milled down below the curve and repaved with full-depth asphalt. And then along both Benson Road and Rand Road, a ten-foot multi-use path will be installed in lieu of a five-foot sidewalk. And on Arbor Green, you'll just have your standard five-foot sidewalk. So a TIA was required both by the town's UDO and as an NC DOT requirement. And the TIA and NC DOT's congestion management unit found the following improvements necessary, and these are in addition to the widenings along Benson Road and Rand Road. So at Benson Road and the site access, they will construct an exclusive right-turn lane. At Benson and Arbor Green Drive, they are required to install a traffic signal at that intersection. And so a signal warrant analysis was completed in order to identify whether that was justified. And it did find that a traffic signal installation was warranted. They will also be constructing an exclusive eastbound left-turn lane. At Arbor Green Drive and the site access, they will construct an exclusive westbound right-turn lane and an eastbound left-turn lane, shared with the through movement for ingress. At Benson Road and Timber Drive intersection, an improvement was identified to restripe the northbound right-turn lane to a shared through and right-turn lane, and to fill in the gaps on Benson Road north of Timber Drive in order to provide two continuous through lanes from Timber Drive through to new Rand extension. Although I wanted to point out that we realized that there was a NC DOT project that is being completed through bonus allocation funds, which will complete the same exact improvement. And so instead, the applicant is being required to pay the fee in lieu for that improvement, since it will already be completed by NC DOT. In terms of site access, there will be three driveways onto the site. There's a right-in, right-out along Benson Road, a right-in-only on Rand Road, and then a full-access drive on Arbor Green Drive with right-out restrictions. In terms of that surrounding area, there are two major funded improvements. So there are two additional lanes being added in each direction to I forty, from NC forty-two to I four forty. And as you just heard from Mr. Jernigan, the NC five forty complete from NC fifty-five to I forty. So in order to give you a little bit more context, and some background of what we can expect from traffic in the Benson Road corridor, we've called out traffic volumes at three different time points. So on the leftmost diagram, you see traffic counts from 2019, and then in the middle, we've outlined projected traffic volumes for 2025, and then in 2035. And so this covers between just north of the intersection at Buffalo Road, going south to, I believe, Cleveland School Road. And so you see here, in the 2019 counts, that the majority of the traffic is going north of Rand, and there is a smaller percentage that is traveling south of there. But then in 2025, at this point, both the I forty widening and the five forty complete project will be fully constructed, or they're anticipated to be fully constructed. And it's important to note that while there's still, while the majority of traffic is still shown going north of Rand, there is a shift in the percentage. And so you don't, it seems that with the opening and with the completion of five forty, that there will be a significant shift, which should help to alleviate some of that traffic congestion north of the Rand Road intersection. And then in 2035, at this juncture, it is, the NC fifty four-lane widening is projected to be completed. That's obviously subject to funding, and as we know from this past year, that is always, it's not an exact, you know, calculation. But it is expected that at that point, the fifty widening will be complete. And so you just see the, what the traffic volumes are projected to be at that point.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, this project is sixteen-point-three acres. The minimum lots size for this zoning district would be six thousand square feet. We have taken this through four full rounds of review by our technical review committee to get it to this point tonight. For tree coverage, there's eleven-point-five percent required, and that is based on the sliding scale of how much they're preserving. They've provided eleven-point-nine percent. There's the four-point-seven existing plus their replacement plantings. Perimeter buffers are based on the likely use at this point. A fifteen-foot perimeter buffer along the property line with the school, a fifteen-foot perimeter buffer along the property line with the convenience store. And again, we will evaluate those buffers for compliance at the time of the special use permit for occupancy of the building, and that will be coming back before you as well. The street buffers are presumed to be fifteen feet along Benson, Rand, and Arbor Green Drive, based on the likely commercial use there. The street trees would be provided approximately every forty feet is required, and you see the numbers there for each road that they are required and they have provided on their site plan. This is not located in a property acquisition area for parks, and no open space is required because this is a commercial development. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved the site plan. This site does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain or other environmental features, as you see there. The site is subject to storm water quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the one, ten, and twenty-five-year storm events. The plan does propose three underground structures for both detention and nitrogen, and those will satisfy all quality and quantity requirements for the site for nitrogen and detention. And a nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. The site will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer through existing There you see the site plan with the driveways noted. The building is a two-story building, and with the accompanying parking deck that you will see. I've got some example, some architectural renderings available for you as well. The minimum parking for the specific use will be reevaluated at the time of the special use permit. However, it does currently meet minimums for the most likely intense use of the property. Proposed lighting does meet the requirements of the lighting ordinance, as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures, which have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than four thousand Kelvin. And here you'll see building design and renderings. This would be two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-two square foot commercial building, that is a two-story building, with adjoining parking deck that you see off there to the left of the rendering. That's five levels, four under roof, and one on top of the roof. The exterior finishing materials will consist largely of brick and stone veneer, along with metal paneling and glass. And due to the topography of this site, and it's sitting lower, we just kind of wanted to point out, that would be Rand Road Elementary there in the background that you would see. And this is another visual showing the parking deck there. Going forward, when considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans, including the three that you see there before you. In addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making your decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the comprehensive plan providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may also serve as sources. Staff recommends that once the town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZ SP twenty fifteen be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. We do have the applicant here who has a presentation for you as well, and staff will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, yeah, I was going to, before we hear from the applicant, see if counsel has questions for staff at this point. So we'll get to them in just a few minutes. But I'll start with Ms. Behringer, if you have any questions for any of our staff. Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So traffic that's coming northbound, are they going to be encouraged to use the Arbor Green entrance? And, or, because it doesn't look like there are any, I think fifty is only two lanes in front of the property, so a left turn in, there's no capacity, someone would stop all traffic trying to turn left into it. Is that the case?
So you're asking where traffic going northbound along Benson, what the main, where they would be expected to enter the site?
So the only entrance is Arbor Green, if you're coming northbound?
So this is Benson Road here, and northbound is to your right.
No, like, if you're coming up from, if you're going north on fifty, so...
Yes, they'd have to, they'd have to turn.
The only entrance is Arbor Green?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's a question. One other question on the site plan, seems to have in the northeast corner the storm water retention, in what appears to be another piece of property. That corner lots, that's part of the project.
Yeah, this is, all of the storm water is underground.
Okay. Okay, so it'd be under?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gotcha.
Right, yeah. The, the heavily black shaded areas, the one that Jeff just pointed out along with the other two are all underground.
Okay.
Stormwater devices.
Okay, Ms. Shingler, anything?
Just to confirm a couple of things, Mr. Dellinger stated the Arbor Green and Highway 50 intersection will be signalized. And I believe I've been reading the information last night, when people are using the back driveway and get to Arbor Green, it'll be a left-out only, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so people won't ride through the neighborhood?
Right, and, and there's expected to be a sign indicating that it's a, it's a dead end. So I mean, it, it's expected that all traffic would, nobody would want to turn right because it's a dead end. You would...
But it will be a left turn only at that, at that intersection, okay.
Yes.
And both the other two entrances are right-in, right-outs off of Rand and also 50, if you're going southbound, it's right-in, right-out.
So 50 is right-in, right-out, but Rand Road is only right-in?
Only right-in.
No right-out.
Hey, if I read the only there, which is written for me in red, I'd have seen that. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
No questions this time.
Okay. All right, thank you, staff. We'll hear from the applicant at this time. If you would just state your name and address, please, sir, first.
Absolutely. Can you hear me? Good evening. Toby Coleman, 150 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, here for the applicant, 900 Rand Road LLC, also representing the very similarly named owner, 900 Rand Land LLC. If you, if you have a question about all that setup, I'm happy to answer, answer you either later or afterwards. It's really not that interesting, I promise. The, if you could, Jeff, if you could go to the next slide. So this has been a, a long time coming. We're, we're really thrilled to be here today. We've got an entire development team that I will talk about a little bit that includes the VA, who's going to ultimately be the owner and operator of this outpatient clinic, as well as a development team that is essentially building to suit this outpatient clinic site. This was something that popped on the, on the community's radar in November 2020, as you can see there, when the VA announced Garner as a location for the new VA outpatient clinic. This has actually been something that the VA has been working on for a few years, even before that. They had identified South Raleigh and Garner as the area where they wanted to have an outpatient clinic and really consolidate their operations that are currently spread around Raleigh, I think primarily. The, when this was announced in November, the town rightly touted it as a big public benefit. It's going to be 245,000, 250,000 feet of outpatient multi-specialty clinic. Fred Rocher with the VA is here, and he'll get, he can give you guys more details on some of the specifics. But the, but the high-level numbers, and these are all pulled actually from the town's press release, but are all accurate, is, you know, care for 25,000 veterans annually, 400 employees coming to this new facility in the town, and a, and a $100 million investment in the town. This was a positive story that received a fair amount of press coverage at the time, including from Ariel, NNO, and the Triangle Business Journal. Jeff, if you could go to the next slide. So as, as, as Jeff, Stacy, and Gabby pointed out, the VA clinic location is there at the intersection of Rand Road and NC-50 Benson Road. It's an assemblage of four parcels, primarily 900 Rand Road, but also those three residential parcels, 1108, 1112, and 1116. As you may know, the VA is a pretty choosy shopper when it comes to purchasing land, even in, in these times when most of us can't really be all that choosy. The VA is particularly choosy. And when, so just to give you a sense on what I'm talking about here, when it put out its solicitation for this clinic a year or two ago, it listed more than a dozen unique requirements, and that's a quote pulled from the solicitation. And they included that it would not consider properties within one mile of liquor, what they called liquor stores, what I'd call an ABC store, gun stores or gun ranges. It would not consider properties within two miles of industrial areas, and any property it selected had to be within eight miles of a hospital. As it turns out, in the 51 square miles of South Raleigh and Garner that made up the VA's area of consideration, they basically did what, what you do, what they did in their government contract is what you and I would do in Zillow, would draw that area that we want to look at. And so there was only one property that met these requirements, is this one. So the VA took, undertook its own extensive environmental review and traffic impact analysis of this site and, and some others before selecting this site. And because this is a build-to-suit situation, the VA has been very involved in the design of the building and imposed a number of requirements on the building. That includes the two-story height that Stacy talked about. It requires things like attractive landscaping and imposes, they've been key in the materials that Stacy outlined, the brick and stone veneer, as well as they generally want to make, ensure that the clinic is a professional and prestigious in appearance. So as I, as I mentioned, the VA has, so the VA has contracted with, with the company behind 900 Rand Road LLC is Atriax PPG, a service-disabled veteran-owned company based out of Hickory. And they are going to be building the new clinic and operating the facilities as the VA's landlord. So as staff has already discussed pretty well, we're here to specifically discuss the rezoning of this property. As Jeff pointed out, bulk of this property, I say 90, Jeff says 89, so I'll go with Jeff's number, of the property is already zoned community retail, which allows medical clinics by right in, in that zoning. So really, the only portion of the property that needs to be rezoned in this context is about 1.7 acres. It's those three home, what are currently homes, those parcels along Rand Road. And that is, to Mr. Dellinger's question, that is where the underground storm water facility and parking lots above the underground storm water facility are going to go, and we'll have a site plan that you can look at in a minute. One of the things we did as part of this rezoning process was, at staff's suggestion, we made this a conditional use zoning for the entire property. So even though we don't have to, even though we don't have to rezone 900 Rand, we did it any, we're doing it anyway, and we're doing it to do two things. Number one, I think the biggest, so there's, there's a variety of, of use prohibitions that you would typically see in a conditional use zoning, you know, no, no apartments, things like that. But I think the big one is, is that there is a provision that says basically, if there's any redevelopment of this site that is inconsistent with this site plan we're talking about, it has to come back to council. You can't redevelop the site without, out of coming back to council, even if it's permitted under the existing zoning. So there's, there's some protection there for the town. You can go to the next slide, Jeff. So Stacy beat me to the punch. This is the elevation, you've already seen it. And she also beat me to the punch in just pointing out that the property, the way it sits, it actually sits below Rand Road Elementary, so because of topography, it, it actually very much fits into the landscape here and will not be hulking over anything. If you could go to the next slide. So this is a very sort of generalized site plan. It's got a couple of call-outs on a couple of items that I wanted to highlight based on what we've heard from neighbors and others. And also wanted to just discuss a couple of items that came up in questions. I, I thought this would be useful, this is obviously not the super-specific site plan. Happy to discuss that if you'd like, but obviously, my experience has been, it's really hard to read these super-specific site plans in the context of a PowerPoint. So these, this, you know, the site plan will be something that's going to come back up to y'all in a couple of months for special use permit. But I did want to highlight a few items. We did work to engage as many neighbors as Jeff outlined as possible, held two meetings, one virtual, one in person, went well beyond the notice requirements to try to make sure we, we reached out particularly to all residents in Arbor Green, which is the adjoining subdivision there. There was, and we held two meetings, and, and the concerns we heard at those meetings relate to traffic, which is a couple of questions that I know council's already had, and then also making sure that the, that the facility was appropriate to be next to a school. I wanted to take the opportunity on the site plan to highlight a couple of steps that we've taken to try to address those concerns. First, in terms of the school, I think it's worth noting, and Fred Rocher with the VA is going to detail it a little bit in a minute, this is a clinic that I think fits very well, that we think fits very well next to a school, because it is not, it does not have an emergency room. It's an outpatient clinic, doesn't have overnight beds. And that means that has regular business hours, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. It also means there's no regular ambulance traffic. You're not going to have a lot of sirens, you're not going to have a lot of noise. The site design, as you can see there, provides a lot of topographic differentiation and a large landscape buffer and a non-scalable fence in between the school and the VA clinic, which provides some additional protection. In addition, this clinic, like any other VA facility, will be secured by the VA police, who are federal-uniformed law enforcement officers, specifically trained to deal with issues that may arise with VA patients and can de-escalate things in the rare case where situations arrive. Arise. And finally, I do want to note, just because we got this question a couple of times, we do not anticipate, the Atriax team does not anticipate that construction will involve pile foundations or piers that are generally associated with vibrations or loud noises during, during the day. And so we did get a couple of questions about, you know, will construction bother the process of education? And the answer is not any more than any sort of normal construction. So we don't think it'll be a significant barrier impact. In terms of traffic and road improvements, I just want to go through in detail a couple of things because staff's already done a great job of outlining it. I did want to outline a few things because it is important. There's no doubt that NC-50 had, already has a lot of traffic, it's already been outlined, and that neighbors asked us a lot about traffic. And we want to deal with that head-on. So first off, as was outlined in the staff presentation, NC-50 is currently only two lanes in this stretcher, stretcher road. Over the next five years, the planned goal of the town, I think of DOT, and I think every person that lives in this area is that it be four lanes to accommodate the traffic. This project, as you all know, will help start that process because what it's going to do is it's going to add a, a southbound lane along this entire frontage that's required as part of the town, town requirements. In addition, there's going to be a right-hand turn lane, dedicated right-hand turn lane going into the Benson Road entrance. While I'm on the Benson Road entrance, I do want to say that it is our plan, our understanding that there is a left-hand turn lane from Benson into the Benson Road entrance. So it is not just a right-in, right-out, it is a full entrance in, right-out. On, on Rand Road, there's already significant traffic up there with counts showing, and, we've got a whole team of folks who can correct me on this stuff as needed, but with counts showing about 500 cars in the morning peak and 300 in the PM peak with long queues already prior to development. And so during the, over the last six months or so, there's been an extensive discussion about where should the exits be and how should they work in this facility? And after a lot of discussion with NC DOT and with town about, particularly about the Rand Road exit, what it was determined was is that if we had a full, full access exit, in other words, both a left and a right out instead of the proposed entrance only, right entrance only in, that it would create a lot of traffic along Rand Road, where there's already a lot of traffic, that even with proposed mitigation measures, including an additional left-hand turn lane at the intersection of Rand and Benson, and some other improvements, that you would still have levels of service D or lower looking 2024 and ahead. And you would also run into the additional problem of bus traffic, which comes in along Rand Road to Rand Road Elementary and makes a left right there. It's left-hand turn lane into, the bus is left-hand turn lane into Rand Elementary, as Jeff is showing there, is right there. And so there is concern that there would be conflicts there and other things. And so as a result, the, the decision was made in conjunction with DOT and staff to make the Rand Road exit a right entrance only. There is also, one of the things that's required is we pork chop it so that it can, you can't come in, can't come out that way. There's also a literal barrier that's going to be installed along Rand Road to prevent left-hand turns out. The result of that is, is that you do have a full exit, both right, potentially right and left, along Arbor Green. But it does have the benefit of creating a situation where currently Arbor Green and NC-50 are an unsignalized intersection. But the, the level of service is really bad if you're trying to take a left off of Arbor Green because there is no stoplight. The, the development here did merit in NC DOT's analysis based on the traffic, estimated traffic counts, the installation of a traffic light there at Arbor Green and Benson, so that will be installed as part of the project, which should help the traffic flows there. It will, there's, there's no getting around it. It will increase the, yes, we do estimate that it will increase the amount of traffic that's coming out of Arbor Green and mainly going towards NC-50. We did hear concerns from neighbors about that, particularly the residents of Arbor Green. We heard two primary concerns. One was the, the pickup and drop-off for Rand Road Elementary is on Arbor Green, and it goes, backs up into the neighborhood so that it doesn't back up into the highway. But there is concern that if, if it was, if there was a right, people taking right-hand turns in the morning or the afternoon, that it could conflict with that. There is also concern from some neighbors about cut-through traffic, you know, not an uncommon concern. We did discuss with the town and did propose making this exit a left-only exit. And we submitted a site plan that included that. Staff determined that that was because of the fact that Rand Road was a limited entrance-only entrance, that, that the Arbor Green exit really needed to be full access. And so, but we were permitted to put a no-through-traffic sign there to discourage people from taking a right. And so that is, that is the proposal. As I said, we've got a really, one of the other things I don't have, that is not on this slide that was mentioned by staff is there will also be improvements. We're going to make improvements up on Timber Drive, which is a couple of miles north, but it sounds like those may already be paid for, so we may make a fee and loan payment if NC DOT signs off on that. So with that, like I said, we have a, a really great group of folks who are happy to answer your questions. Hopefully, I've tried to address some of your questions in advance. We're happy and available to discuss this. We're really excited to be in front of y'all. I have never been with a group that wanted to get to a, a town council hearing more than this group, I can tell you. They've been chopping at the bed since about, I don't know, December.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And yeah, we'll see if council wants to pose questions here before we get to the next witness. Ms. Shingler, do you have anything, Mr. Coleman?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, wait just a minute, see if, Mr. Matthews, anything? Ms. Behringler? Mr. Vance?
No.
Okay, Ms. Behringler? Dellinger?
Yeah, just very appreciative of the extended outreach efforts that you all made. You have one question about the design and future, either not when it's built or further on, accommodations for public transportation and buses. So there's a lot of people who can't have access to automobiles, may need to get transport to the site from different parts of the county. Is there, is that possible for there to be a stop location? Is that, was that discussed at all for having sort of future transit stops and accessibility?
It's very important to the VA that this, that there be transit accessibility. Do you want to address that? There have been extensive discussions actually about getting transit, so I'm going to hand it off. This is Angie Morgan, GLNV, she's part of the design team.
Thank you.
Give us your name, please, ma'am.
Angie Morgan with GLNV.
Okay.
And yeah, so it's important that there is access to the facilities, like Toby already mentioned. The VA really puts a lot of value in that, and we have been working with the Busing Authority to try to see what that might look like. In fact, the site plan itself, we've, we've ran several vehicle tracking kind of auto-turn things to make sure that if we have to put that immediately on our site, we will be able to accommodate that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from council on this? Okay. Thank you very much. Are we hearing from... Are we hearing from someone else? Benjamin from Hickory? No? Okay.
Who, Fred Rocher? Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. How are you? I'm Fred Rocher. I am with the Durham VA Healthcare System. I've been working on this project now for about three years. As stated, it's probably been the works closer to about 10. Once this is done, I will be running the facility here, at, at the new facility for, for the Durham VA. As mentioned, there is no ER, we have no beds. So, again, right now, services will be Monday through Friday. Generally, our appointments are eight to 4:30. Our hours will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to six. Staff come in, get ready for labs, that kind of thing. We are, as discussed, a multi-specialty clinic. Our bread and butter is going to be primary care and mental health, and then we will have specialty care. Right now, we're looking at some cardiology, non-invasive cardiology, neurology, pulmonary, audio and speech pathology. We will have an imaging department there that will include a CT and an MRI. We will also have an onsite pharmacy. And as mentioned, we do have, the facility will be staffed with VA police, because I know there was a message about, concerns about having to call the sheriffs and in that kind of time. As mentioned, VA police, they are federal law enforcement officers, and they will be onsite during the clinic hour operations. So, we are looking forward to getting there. As I said, it's been several years in the making. The plan right now, we currently have three, what we call C-Box, Community-Based Outpatient Care, Community-Based Outpatient Clinics in the Raleigh area, and this is to kind of consolidate those. Although, with this area that we're talking about, Wake County, that's one of our, our largest catchment areas with, one of our largest number of veterans residing in our service area. And so, we may actually even end up keeping one of those C-Box that we currently have in, in the northern part of Raleigh. But so, again, we are looking forward to be in there. We've done the, our modeling shows that this is where we need a, a facility. It'll be about 35 to 45 minutes away from the medical center, so it, it is a good location for us. It will allow us to bring these services closer to the veterans that live in this part of our catchment area. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have concerning the facility and what we plan on having in, in that facility.
Okay, yeah, and I'll turn to the council in just, just a moment. I've lived in or near several cities in North Carolina that have regu, what I call regular VA hospitals. My question was going to be, are there other places in North Carolina where you have these type clinics or something similar?
Yes, sir. So, we have, actually, this is one of the smaller facilities that we have. So, in North Carolina, and actually, I came from the one in Wilmington, they call what they have healthcare centers. And those are a little more advanced. Durham currently has one that's in Greenville. There is one in Fayetteville, one in Charlotte, and one in Kernersville, belonging to our sister facility. So, Wilmington and the Fayetteville, HCCs belong to the Fayetteville Medical Center. Charlotte and Kernersville belong to Salisbury. And then Durham will have, we currently have Greenville, and then, once this is done, we'll have this outpatient clinic here in Garner.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Vance, I'll start with you, if you have any questions for us, Rick?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Dellinger?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Just a, a brief comment. I've been to your facility in Durham, did some things in Vietnam, so sure say, and it's been, it was a great facility over there. And I think the location of this one will serve not only the southern Wake, but Harney, Harneyton, Johnson County. There's a high volume of retired military, as well as veterans over in this area. And I'm just very pleased at the location of this, and I think it'll serve a lot of veterans. So, I guess y'all know where I stand on this, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, as, as I think was mentioned earlier, right now, with the, the three facilities that we are planning to roll into this new site, our first year, we're looking at seeing what we call 25,000 unique veteran patients in this facility. So, once, once it's operational, we, we will have a, a large number of veterans utilizing this, this facility in, in this location. So, we do think it's a positive thing for, for our veterans, and it allows us to, as I said earlier, bring services closer to where the veterans live, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it, sure enough. Was there anyone else in regards to the, to the VA and the development team? If, if not, this is a public hearing, we're going to recognize some other folks who may want to speak. So, Ms. Clerk, let me see, I have, was, was Carol Burt wanting to speak at this hearing, do you know?
I believe so.
Are we able to, she, she is speaking remotely, I believe, so we'll hear from her at this time.
So, I didn't want to speak, I just wanted to attend the meeting.
Okay. So, so, so you've been able to see and hear, I'm sure, so you, you, you don't need to speak at this time, is that correct?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, there may be others in the audience who came prepared to speak on this topic, pro or con, and so, I'll be happy to recognize anyone else who, from the public, who would like to speak at this time. Are there others? Okay, please come to the podium and give us your name and address, and you can share with us what you'd say.
Hello. My name is Beth Burke Scherer. I'm a resident of 121 Holocourt in Garner, and I've been a resident of the Arbor Green subdivision for the past 15 years, and a mom of a child at Rand Road Elementary consecutively for the past 10 years. So, I have walked a child beginning today to school for, for 11 consecutive years. This morning was my 11th year. And I just want to start out by saying, I am in favor of the, the Veterans Facility. What a wonderful, you know, resource for our community. Veterans have sacrificed a lot, and I'm, I'm not here to complain about that. What I'm asking for, though, is protection for these children, and particularly for the 140 homes in this neighborhood, who, for whom these children have no option for transportation other than walking. And, excuse me, but basically, what, what the problem is, is not that necessarily the VA center is there. It is that our neighborhood will become a thoroughfare for, for traffic, and particularly for traffic turning right out of the VA facility onto Arbor Green Drive. And I've, I've heard a couple of different statements here, so I want to make sure that I'm not fighting something that has already been resolved, but I've heard that there might be restricted access onto Arbor Green Drive out of the VA clinic. But what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is I'm seeing two different things. One, I'm seeing that there is no right-hand turns, there's going to be a left-turn-only signal. But then I've also heard that instead, what is being proposed is a no-through-traffic sign. And I, I'm here to tell you, I don't think the no-traffic time, sign will be sufficient to protect the children there. And the reason why is that, as a parent who has walked her child to school for, you know, 11 years, I have seen several close calls. Many of you may remember Tammy Hawkins, who was a crosswalk guard for the town of Garner and was hit on, on Timber Drive. She was actually our crosswalk guard. She was doing some, she was doing some substitution work. But I, I saw her many times, I'll be almost hit by people in that area. And we've since had two other crosswalk guards in that area, and they take their, they take their hands on their own lives in order to protect these children. And about two years ago, the neighborhood and the school partnered together to try to eliminate some of these traffic problems. And we did so by basically restricting access to, parents' access to drop-off and pickup from Benson Road up Arbor Green. So, right now, what is happening, and, you know, for anybody that might want to see a map, I have quickly drawn something on my iPhone. I'd, I'd be happy to share it if it's easier to see. I'll just lay them here for anybody might want to see.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. But effectively, what has hap, has happened is that all of the carpool traffic is now backing up through our neighborhood, so that the children who are in the crosswalk zone, which is circled with a red, and excuse me, this, none of this is to scale, but that crosswalk is what the children use to cross. And so, it used to be that red area is where a lot of cars used to back up, and the crosswalk guard was having to protect those children in that area from several different, from several different areas. Now, you see almost a yellow highlighting that I put there. And now, parents are prohibited from entering, entering the carpool line from Benson Road up Arbor Green, and they must come down our neighborhood. Is that, is that an inconvenience for our, our neighborhood? Yes. I cannot get into my driveway sometimes, but it's, it's a sacrifice that I have been willing to, to accept in order to protect our children, because the problem has become so significant at times, with kids almost getting hit, or the crosswalk guard getting hit. My concern is that if, if traffic is allowed to exit the VA and come through our neighborhood, that that is going to basically put us back in the same spot again. All those children are going to be crossing. And, you know, I think a couple of years ago, when this, you were looking at what had happened with Ms. Hawkins, someone said a two, two to 3,000-ton, you know, bomb is like hitting, you know, moving toward these children. And so, that's why I have asked, and to the developers' credit, they, they, I think, made a request, that there be a left-turn-only sign there. And it seems to me that, right now, it's just no-through-traffic, and that's just not going to have the teeth to protect our children. And so, you know, I'm happy to meet with anybody out there and, and, you know, walk through what we've been through and what we've seen, but I would just really ask for the, the city, the city officials to really look at putting this as a, a no, a no-right-turn sign there. Because we really need to, first of all, protect those walkers who, like I said, have no other option to get home in the afternoon. Many of them walk unaccompanied. But second, to really, to, to keep the traffic in our neighborhood down. We are, you know, we're, we are going to accept that there's going to be a period, I mean, there's going to be a portion of that road where we're going to be accepting, you know, additional traffic. But to turn our neighborhood into a thoroughfare, that's going to make things very difficult. And we've tried before to get speed bumps, we've not had a whole lot of success, it's just going to make it worse. So, that is what my comment is, is I would really like that to see to be a, a left-turn-only out of that, out of that facility, to keep, keep the traffic out of this neighborhood, and in particular, out of this crosswalk zone.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the VA care to make a comment?
Can I ask you another question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Sure.
What was your last name again?
My name is Beth Scherer, S-C-H-E-R-E-R.
Okay. Ms. Scherer, the crosswalk's, it's been the same place the entire time you've been, the 11 years you've been using it, it's been in the same place, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we switched the traffic, which used to back up and go down 50?
Yes, sir.
And we switched it to go back through the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can relate to this, because for 15 years, I lived in School Acres, right beside North Corner Middle School. And all about traffic in schools, I mean, I was the only house on that side of the road beside the school, so I can relate to that. So, I just want to clarify about the, the, the crosswalk. You mentioned something about speed bumps, this topic, traffic calming is something we've been talking about recently. But I look at that crosswalk and think, that needs to be raised, like a table. There's been some new construction, I do some work down in Wilson Wright beside Barton College, and they put more than one of those in to slow down traffic, but also to designate a point for people to cross. We'll get that, we're not going to talk about that now, but
Right.
Your point about no-left turn, I asked a question, and then I heard something different, and we're going to get an answer to the question, because your point is well-taken.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr., so if I may comment on Mr. Singleton's point, I think the raising, but also some curbing, medians on the side to narrow that, that through rate as well, any traffic, because it is a wide road. I drove over there today just to go through, and I drove through it before. I do have another concern that will, only time will tell, and that is traffic being routed through your neighborhood to get to that entrance, as opposed to the Rand Road entrance on the backside. Hopefully, over time, that would play itself out, but I think that crosswalk issue is something we could figure out, some way to address.
Yes, and, and like I said, we, we thank you. I mean, the, the other thing I didn't mention, because again, I'm here kind of advocating for this crosswalk, but the larger neighborhood as a whole, you know, we have, we have driveways that come directly off of Arbor Green, and children even who are walking home, who have to go to Verdy Glenn, have to cross over again, because sidewalk on the right-hand side leads to nowhere. So, all those children have to cross without any kind of crosswalk to get to the Verdy Glenn homes. So, again, my immediate concern is definitely protecting this crosswalk, because whenever the school and the neighborhood partnered together to make sure that parents were only entering from, for, for pickup from the Arbor Green neighborhood, it virtually eliminated traffic coming in off of Rand Road up into the crosswalk. This morning, of course, it was a new, new school morning, and one or two parents thought they could get in, turn right, but they had to go to the end, and that eliminates that. And I'm sorry. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, okay, let me get to Ms. Behringer, then I'll get to you, Mr. Matthews.
You know, human nature is such that if we are left to our own resources, we will get away with whatever we can. And so, we're going to have to do something more than what's been prescribed so far. Another concern I have, I've noticed lately in, in just shopping centers, that there are a number of, of senior citizens that, well, I don't know if they're senior citizens or not, but handy, people who park in handicap spots and supercab trucks. And if we have folks like that coming into and out of the VA, they where, well, may not see children. And that's an added, an added danger. So, we need to do everything we can to make sure these children are safe, and that the neighborhood is not compromised because of the new facility.
And Phil?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think the best way to settle this is cut right to chase, so we can move this project forward. I'm sure the developers would stipulate that no-right turn, left turn only, or how you want to work that out, could be that sign, and I think that would resolve the issues that the, the young lady, mother has for all the kids in the neighborhood. And if you got, they would stipulate that, and as well as Mr. Singleton brought it up too, that, that would remedy this problem and keep traffic out of your neighborhood and protect those kids, left turn only.
Yeah. Mr. Vance, do you have anything?
Uh, nope. No, the concerns are, are well noted and understood, and, and what is being proposed, I am in favor of, and looking into the methods of traffic calming, and to how to keep the traffic from going down into Arbor Green, or, or studies that are worth conducting.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I, I think you're certainly hearing consensus here that there's not a person sitting at this day that doesn't share concern for the safety of kids and/or adults as far as that goes. And I live fairly close to a school, so I have some awareness there. But I, I'm sure the town will be happy to work with the VA to mitigate this issue and to try to make sure that it's, it is not an ongoing concern, and that we do all we can to keep the children safe.
Thank you very much. And we look forward to working with a developer on this. Thank you.
Okay. Was there any? Go ahead.
Since we're on this topic right now, so we're going to start mixing something up, can staff explain to us why, instead of having the, the left-on-the-turn-out, you want the through traffic? Can you explain that? Because I, I thought we had them left-out, but then I found out that's not true, so can we get that explained?
So, I, I think staff's initial, we, we're open to signing it and marking it however all you want. I think, I think it's just critical to realize, though, that there's not really any physical construction things that you can do to actually prevent somebody from making a right. So, it's not, it's not that, and when we're looking at their traffic, there is probably 1% or less, you know, whether that's right or not. But we're open to
1% or less, what do you mean, of what now, Jeff?
To, to go, to make a right.
Okay.
Versus who's going to go out to 50. So, I don't think anybody, I'm, Chris is behind me. I don't think anybody's opposed to signing it or marking it, however, but we just want to be sure that it's clear that it's going to be next to impossible to prevent somebody from making a right, if they decide that's what they're going to do.
All right.
Yeah, well, I understand, I appreciate that. I mean, you can put a porch out there, and people will still ride over it if they want to do it, so unless you're going to put armed guards out there, that's not going to stop people from doing stupid things, so thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I mean, it's, it's not going to be a thoroughfare, I understand the concern, but this is a lot different. I understand the concern, uh, but this is a lot different from something like you would see on Timber Drive. This is a two-lane local street, and according to the TIA, all the traffic's trying to either get out to 540 or to the north to Timber Drive, and it doesn't make logical sense to take a right out to make those primary movements that most people are going to be making. So, um, we could do that, but it's, we don't think there's going to be many people turning right out of the site.
The only question I have is, you're going to have people coming from all over the Triangle who aren't familiar with that and know that that's a neighborhood street. Uh, we can all pop it in our phone and tell us what to do, but you always got some smart aleck who says, hey, I can beat the system. And it may be 1%, it may be 91%, I don't know, I don't think so, but you always got the smart aleck who thinks, hey, I'll just cut through here and do this and do that. So that's, I reckon that's the concern that she, she's sharing, and I understand that. I think we all understand that.
Okay, are you good? Okay, fine, thank you. Um, all right, I don't believe I saw anybody else who had indicated a desire to speak at this time, is that right? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Council, I believe the proper course of action at this point is to, uh, take a vote to refer this to the, um, Planning Commission for their consideration, and then it will come back to, uh, to this council.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any question, hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, I want to take a minute to thank all of you. This has been a fairly, uh, long hearing, but, uh, I'm encouraged by what I've heard and the presentations that have been made tonight. I think this will be a, certainly a great, um, addition to our town. I understand the concerns about the roads, but, uh, some of, some of that will, is, is a continuing process. I did share with somebody that, I have a neighbor up the street, that after he read the article, uh, he came down and saw me immediately, and of course, he's a veteran, and, uh, obviously, he was very pleased to know that there would be a clinic of this type, uh, much closer to him than anything that is the case. And there will be a lot of people here in Garner and surrounding areas. Phil mentioned that this will put them a lot closer to some of the kinds of medical care that they need and deserve. So, uh, so thank you all. Um, we'll be hearing from you again, uh, as the process moves forward. Um, if there's anything else from council, we'll move to the next item on the agenda.
Uh, timeout.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Um, yeah, what we'll do at this point is, we usually take a recess at nine o'clock for everybody to sort of catch their breath. So, um, I will declare that we'll be in recess for 10 minutes, give everybody a chance. To those of you who need to leave, can go ahead and do that. And, um, thank you. 10-minute recess. Thank you very much.
Wow, everybody's gone.
Okay. Okay, counsel, thank you for being back timely, probably more so than the mayor. But at any rate, we will continue with our agenda. We have one more public hearing and then we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. So at this point, I'd like to recognize Mr. Beck, our finance director, as it relates to the bond referendum, public hearing. And so he's going to make a presentation initially, and I'll recognize any other persons who may want to speak.
Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
Yes, I seem to have impeccable timing coming after the high interest items on the agenda. Don't have much of a crowd here for the public hearing, but nonetheless, we have to move forward with it.
Don't take it personal.
I will not. As you mentioned, tonight is the time and the place for the public hearing on the proposed bond referendum. It's been advertised in the paper, and we would ask that, you know, you open that public hearing, hear any comments, and then we have several action items that would need to take place following the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beck. So I don't think we had anybody, Mrs. Gibson, who asked to be heard virtually, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay. And seeing no one in the audience at this point in time who would be desiring to speak, I'm going to open the hearing and I guess close it all at the same time. We'll hear from counsel if you have any comments just before Mr. Beck leads us through the voting process here. Anybody have a further observation or comment at this time? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Beck, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Thank you. So as you'll recall, at the July 20 meeting, we introduced the bond orders, and now is the time to formally adopt and authorize those bond orders. So that would be, the next action item would be to take each of the proposed bond orders individually and adopt those and authorize those.
Okay. So counsel, are you ready to vote? I think we need to vote on each one of them separately.
Yes, sir, I'll start with the first one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move that we approve the final passage of the order authorizing $24 million, $50,000 in street and sidewalk improvement bonds.
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded on this item. I don't believe there are any questions, so hearing none. Counsel, if you approve this motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it's so ordered. Item number two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve final passage of order authorizing $35 million, $500,000 for parks and recreation bonds.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded on item number two. No questions from counsel. I'll ask you to vote aye if you favor, no if you don't, but we'll vote aye first.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Item three, entertain a motion for that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take on item three. Move that we approve final passage of order authorizing $6 million, $500,000 public safety and service facilities bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Vance, all right. Counsel, ask you to vote on item three. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
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 If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, item four would be next up.
Mr. Mayor, I'll do that one. I move that counsel approve final passage of order authorizing $2 million, $950,000 stormwater bonds.
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Hearing no questions, I'll ask counsel to vote. If you favor this motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none, thank you. All right, and our last item, number five, a motion for that.
I move we adopt the resolution calling for a bond referendum on the four bond orders to be held November 2, 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Hearing no questions, counsel, if you favor this motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, we would vote no. So thank you, counsel. In some ways, this seems almost anticlimactic. We've been talking and planning for this for a long time. And counsel, I want to commend you for the work that has been put together. Work is certainly still ahead of us now that we're this far along. But yeah, okay.
Yep, this one typographical, it says that Greg Flynn is the chair of Wake County Board of Elections. They've changed chairs, Erica Porter is now the chair.
Oh, okay. Where is that, Mr. Dellinger? I'm not.
Of the page six of the bond referendum. To the last page of it. Make that typographical change.
Okay, yeah, you said the chair of the Wake County Board of Elections is Erica Porter.
Erica Porter, okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger.
It just recently changed, I think in the past couple of weeks, so.
I didn't know Mrs. Flynn personally, but I knew he had been, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, counsel, you will note that change or that correction, if you will. Okay. All right, anything else on this item? Ms. Attorney, were you good on that, all right? Okay, Mr. Beck, I believe that's everything. Anything else on this?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for your work there as well. Okay, weird item, a, new or old business, nothing noted on the agenda. Is there anything, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Assistant Manager?
Not under new or old business that I know of, no add-ons.
Okay, all right. So we'll go to committee reports. We've been hearing from our HR committee, and they've been keeping us up to date. Is there anything from your committee, Mr. Vance?
We have nothing new to add today.
Okay, any other committees that have met? I will mention that I had put together a committee involving Mr. Singleton and Pro Tem Beringer in regards to a manner of renaming, and I will be in touch with you very soon to get that committee back together. Okay. Manager reports, Mr. Dickerson.
Yes, in addition to the Garner info, I have about four other reports. So if there's, are there any questions on Garner info?
Any, counsel, you've got it there.
Just a reminder about the Connect Conference on August the 26th. So if you plan to attend that, please let the clerk know so we can get a ticket for you. I know it's going to be, a bus tour is planned, and there'll also be, you know, some speakers and things like that, and should be a good conference.
And I just, I understand there will be a segment there relating to our bonds, right? Which will be a good time to do that, okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Also, just want to let you know that there'll be a downtown community meeting with LMG. They're the developers of the downtown redevelopment site beside the rec center, and that's going to be on Thursday, August the 12th. 6:30 to 8 o'clock, and it's floating, floating time, so you can come in any time between then. The presentation will be between 6:30 and 7:30, and that will be held in the Garner Recreation Center multipurpose room.
Dickerson, one clarification, there'll be a presentation at 6:30 and another presentation at 7:30, so if anyone misses the formal presentation.
All right, thanks. All right. Then also wanted to announce that the Wake Bus Rapid Transit Southern Corridor was approved as an FTA project, Federal Transit Administration, effective July 14, 2021. That doesn't necessarily imply a funding commitment, but the designation is important indicator that the project is making significant progress and is on track for future funding opportunities. With this designation, that means all design and construction costs eligible for federal participation. They'll begin survey and design work associated with preliminary design, which we call 0 to 30% design, and it will take about 20 months to complete.
Okay.
So that's a good, a good sign. Also, a reminder that the Jürgen and Meadowbrook 30% plans, we plan to present that on September the 23rd. The preliminary plans that the contractor or consultant is working on now, and just kind of take you through that and where we are with those, and get your comment. Anything else on those?
That's the date the council does not have. We were going to ask if they, if.
Oh.
We've penciled it in with the consultants, and we wanted to find out if there would be availability from staff to have a called meeting since most, since all of the development meetings for these projects have been a special focused meeting. We were going to look at the morning of the 23rd of September.
What's the, that's a Thursday. Thursday.
And starting at 8:30 or 9:00 or so, is that right? If we can have it then.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're proposing? Okay, counsel, what say you? That date look reasonable for everybody here?
That is September 23rd?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, can you make that?
I'll put it down right now.
Okay, good. All right. You'll send out a reminder on that soon, I'm sure.
We anticipate that to go to probably midday, more likely so.
My guess is that we would have lunch there available for you, and if we need to meet during or after lunch, we could, if not, you can take lunch, take lunch away with you.
Good, thanks, all right.
We don't know where the meeting will be held yet.
No, sir. We will send out a confirmation when, now that we've heard back from you, we'll confirm that with the consultants, and then we'll identify a location.
John, how long will that, I'm sorry, will it go all day?
No, ma'am, we're thinking most of the morning, that we'll have lunch available, and if we can wrap up around lunchtime, then you can take your lunch with you. If we need a little more time, we can either work through lunch or finish shortly thereafter.
I was just noting that the UDO steering committee has a meeting that afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Okay.
What was that date again, just make sure I have it?
September 23rd.
23.
Thursday. That's all the reports I have.
Okay, everything, Mr. Manager, okay? All right, very good, thank you. Attorney reports.
I just want to let you know that I'll be at the North Carolina Municipal Attorneys Conference this week. It is in person, although they've instituted a mask mandate today, came out. So I'll be there Thursday through Sunday in Atlantic Beach. And at that meeting, I've been nominated to represent on the board of directors towns of population 15,000 to 49,000. So that would be a three-year term.
And congratulations on you for that recognition by your peers. We're pleased and proud that you will hold that position for sure.
What a coincidence, this weekend, Atlantic Beach is the Atlantic Beach Music Festival on Saturday.
Oh, yeah? All right, all right.
Get your Ag and shoes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Was that it, Ms. Jones? Okay. All right, we are at counsel reports, and I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Beringer.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Okay, I'll go to my left, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we move forward with the bond referendum, you know, last time we had scheduled meetings, presentations, civic groups, church groups, HOAs and so forth, when are we going to be sitting down talking about that and trying to finalize those? Or asking, maybe virtual, maybe something else, who knows? But when are we going to be working on that? And there were two presentations that the council sold on tape for everybody to see also.
Yeah, we're, we're working with the consultant now on some of the collateral material and design, and I know Rick's already started working on some of the presentation pieces too. We don't have any dates ironed out yet, and I know John's been talking to Chamber about, you know, their role. So you have any?
So once we have a draft of the materials back, then we were going to get with counsel whether or not there's time to do it at a meeting or just offline with each of you to talk about some of the content and also start preparing for the presentation that'll be at Connect Conference. And we might want to schedule a couple of the presentations prior to that one just so we can, can work through any questions that might come up from that. And then the thought was, once the Connect Conference sort of rolled everything out, then we would start a schedule and be able to put together teams. If, for those of you involved, last time we had staff teams that were available and trained that could partner with council members to go and help with the education part of any additional information you want to provide. So we'll be happy to set those up in any fashion you'd like, but we wanted to at least offer what we did last time, which was pairing up of staff members who were prepared and had the materials that could accompany council members on meetings. And we'll put a master schedule together so that you can drop in, drop in opportunities, whether you're scheduling them or we're scheduling them, but we'll have something that you can interact with and see where we're presenting when. We just are, we're waiting for that draft information to come back, Mr. Singleton, before we schedule it.
Okay, and then we also need to schedule one of our meeting, public meetings in September and one in October where it can be presented on our meeting for people to see again like we did last time.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and I guess it goes without saying, I was on another town here in Wake County's website today, and they're doing a bond issue, and obviously they've got some pretty good information out there about theirs. I'm sure we'll have something on our website as soon as possible that we'll share with the public, the five issues and some background information and stuff.
Yes, sir, what Mr. Mercer's worked, is working on with the consultant is what's called a microsite. So they'll develop a multi-page website that will be embedded in our site, so you'll get to it from the town site. But then that'll have content that's designed and will be unique to the bond referendum to help educate folks about each of the questions and provide the information you need. So that'll all be a part of that draft materials that we hope to get back from them.
Good.
Very soon.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Singleton?
Sure, that's all, thank you.
Okay, Phil?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Dellinger?
Just a quick question with the rec center kind of highlighted, but also how do we anticipate the current COVID restrictions to impact programming? As the restrictions stand now, and then, you know, they phase, get more, you know, more restrictive, what would be the impact and how are we preparing for that?
Definitely going to call staff to rethink, you know, the plan on how to roll that out. I mean, they were all set to roll some of the things out this month. So I mean, they're going to look at that and the restrictions and I guess some of the guidelines they get from their, their association on recreation, and then just kind of take some of that and, you know, do the best they can to provide services in a safe manner. So it will, it will change camps and things like that. And we might have to postpone, we may end up having to postpone some activities that we were planning to roll out.
An email came out today saying that the rec center was going to open to the public on August the night.
That was the plan.
That's been the date, that's been announced previously. And now, as of Friday afternoon, staff's having to make alternate plans for, I think we can still have it open to the public.
Not to the same degree as we would like.
Staff was using a pod system back during, earlier in the pandemic where we had a limited, smaller groups for kids' activities, where we limited the number of children participating with each other, being able to provide more social distancing. So one of the plans we're putting in place is to look at what of our programs have we planned to operate that we could scale down using the pod system and still be able to offer them, but it's just going to be in a reduced manner. So again, reacting quickly since Friday afternoon, and we'll get more details to you.
And I know, I think, I guess in that same announcement, that some of the programming over at GPAC or some of the entertainment there was, was planning to, I guess, go live. And so we're still looking at, I guess, if that's, if we're going to move forward with that, right?
We're looking at what our social distancing options and availabilities are for some of those, as well as some of the ticketed participation events at the senior center. So activities have been ramped up there, there were classes that had been paid for that we had sold enough spaces for you to operate indoors together. And now, as early as today, there was too many people to be in the space safely. So looking at alternatives to moving those outdoors where that's not appropriate, having to scale back. But for some of those that had been prepaid before Friday's announcement, having to make modifications on the fly. But all of our, all of our parks facilities, we are looking at modifications, what would be necessary or what would be advisable for those programs.
All right. All right, anything else, Mr. Dellinger?
The only other thing is I've never seen anything like this in my entire life. This petition and this research effort is pretty amazing. That's all I can say. It's like a thesis.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
Have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to mention the Relay for Life, which has become an annual event in our town. We didn't have it the previous year, but I'd also like to give a shout out to Jill Cunningham, who this year, I believe this was her 24th year in chairing or co-chairing that event. May not have had as many attendees this year, but there was still a lot of excitement, enthusiasm, and if any of you still have an interest in making a contribution to the cause, I will still accept those. But this town, I've forgotten, maybe we announced there, I think over the course of time, has raised something in the range of $3 million or maybe over $3 million, am I right on that, John? Or is it $1 million?
I don't know that number, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think I saw $3 million somewhere, but anyway. This year, we sort of hosted a triangle thing with some folks from other towns around us. So it was an extremely warm day, but still a good event. Okay, that's all I have for right now. And again, counsel, I don't ever take it for granted, but thank you for, for your work here tonight. And I think we got everything accomplished as we needed to. And now, I believe the only thing we have left is a closed session to consult with the attorney, so I'll entertain a motion that we go in a closed session at this time.
I'm going to go to closed session pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143318.11a3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition, okay? I'm going to declare. I'm going to declare.
Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Okay, clear that we're back in regular session, having gone into closed session to confer with our attorney in regards to litigation. And she made a report to the council. The council was not required to vote or take any formal action at this time. So that concludes our agenda for the evening. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Declare a meeting adjourned and completed for the evening. Thank you all. Be safe getting home.